Joel's documents are in your, if I recall, your November 1st school board packet.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's almost 9:30 at night and we're about to get handed a $30 million-plus budget.
I'm not anticipating a lot of productive conversation too much further tonight from anybody.
Then would you like to have a copy of the budget for you to process in preparation for December 6th?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, please, Milton.
Dr. Milton.
I want to stretch.
He doesn't stick more of the candy.
Thanks, sir. You're right, it's not hot off the presses.
And no offense to you, Joel.
No, it's-
No offense at all.
Still warm. Take it, you won't.
She is a stranger, is that what you're saying?
That what you just said? She is a freak?
Who did it upside down? Did you?
Of course.
It's not upside down. Basically, it's stapled like that so you can flip the page up and read it.
Oh, very nicely.
If you want to turn it back and forth, I can make it so you can do that.
No, it's good.
Now, is this with the proposed cut that we asked you to do?
No, it's not.
Why not?
Because I was in a position as superintendent to attempt to convince you that you were making a mistake. And I also was in the position where I told you two months, two meetings ago, I am struggling to understand how we can do that. So I didn't, so this, now, if you as a board, after all of this, if you as a board still want that, I need your help as to where that's going to come from.
So-
Without undoing what's going on for six years. I need your help for what we talked about November 1st. So this budget does not include a $1.2 million reduction below this fiscal year because this budget includes increases with insurance increases, with collective bargaining agreements.
What is your total?
So my suggestion would be to spend some time with this budget because this budget does not include taking apart the district, which $1.7, $1.8 million would do if we follow your September 30th directive.
I didn't want to distract everybody. It's not accidental.
You're so smart.
Mike, can you ask a question for me?
Sure can.
Did we give back a $600,000 surplus last year?
Did we give back?
Is that a-
No.
Didn't we have a $600,000 surplus?
That was money that was carried over from a previous year. Last year, we actually had no surplus. We pretty much spent our entire budget.
But, just to cut to the chase, what I just heard, so you're telling us that a 3.8% reduction in budget is going to destroy the district? And then I'm going to ask this question, and it's rhetorical, and I'm just going to leave it alone. You're basically saying to us, "We can't cut anything." Okay, I can respect that. The next logical progression's going to be, "I'm not sure why we make any suggestions because you're going to say, 'We can't cut that' because you're saying, 'We can't cut anything.'"
So you came in with a directive of a $1.2 million below fiscal year of 18. That's going to represent about a $2 million cut, a little under a $2 million cut because we can't go below fiscal year 18 with fixed cost increases, collective bargaining agreements that you have approved. So it's not going to be 1.2, below fiscal year 18. It's going to be about a $2 million cut, or perhaps maybe 1.8. I'm just floating, but here's the bottom line. Bottom line is with the fixed cost increases and the reduction of revenue over the past several years, and now you're saying, and the budget in the past four years being basically flat, flat because we have been consuming, we've been cannibalizing, if you will, now you're saying find another 1.8 million. If that's your directive, we'll come back December 6th.
That was our directive before.
If that, but, excuse me, that was your directive before I asked you specifically, "Where is that?" And you couldn't give me, you couldn't give me responses.
It's not up to us to tell you that.
We didn't have a budget yet. We don't have, we didn't have a budget till just now. We haven't seen numbers. This is exactly what I said a month ago. You can't expect us to do anything until we see numbers. So this, this delay thing has led us right to exactly where I said it was going to, we're just now getting a $31 million budget and saying, "Tell me where to cut."
32.
32. But even on the worst-case scenario, we're looking at a 6% cut. Nobody's going to convince me that that's going to destroy a district. But I just want to, I'm frustrated that we gave a directive that has been deliberately ignored, but I'll just leave that out.
In all honesty, though, in all honesty, I didn't ignore your directive. I came back and saying, "Ladies and gentlemen, on September 30th, you came in with some directives, all right? And I'm saying, 'Do you understand what that means? No technology impact. Well, you saw it tonight. What's going to happen if you just shut down technology?'" So I, I'm not going to lay down, I'm being very respectful, but please listen to me. I'm not going to lay down and just say, "Sure, Board, you want to do this, we'll do that," without at least your understanding, whoa, do you understand what that means?
Last, last meeting, you did this big presentation, you stomped your feet even, saying you couldn't do it, you couldn't do it. You didn't follow the directive that we asked you to do. That's all we asked, Dr. McGudwin. We asked you to come back with a budget was a million dollars less, yes.
What, no, 1.2 million less.
1.2 million less, but we asked that directive of you, and you put us off by doing presentations and trying to convince us otherwise, rather than just following the directive, bringing us a budget and saying, "Hey, we've chopped it to hell, but here it is." Then we could have looked at it and said, "Well, we know we really need this." You didn't give us an option. You just told us, "We can't do it." What are you saying to anyone when you say, "I can't do it"? There's no such word as "I can't."
"I cannot do it," and have you face the public in saying, "We support this." But at the, but tonight, if you as a board collectively are saying, "We want this budget to be 1.2 million dollars less than fiscal year 18," I will come back December 6th with that, with that, what it's going to look like, if that's what you want. And then we can have that discussion.
Yeah.
But my concern was, on December 30th, when you came with that 1.2 million below fiscal year 18, it was, you didn't understand what you were asking us to do.
Yes, we did understand, and that's the whole point. We didn't have the option. You didn't give us that option. You chose for us, rather than following the directive. You chose that, and I'm sorry, Dr. McGudwin, but you're in the wrong. We asked you to do a directive. Now, if we say, "Okay, you come back with that one point, whatever million cut, and technology needs to go back in," then we put technology back in where it needs to be, or we look at what, why this is here. You give us the option to say, "Well, we can't lose this, and we can't lose that." Okay, well, maybe we've got 500,000 less. But you have not given us that option. You did not follow the directive. So, once again, we're going to ask you to come back with a budget that is less by 1.5?
Two.
Two?
1.2 below fiscal year 18. I would ask the board-
One point, excuse me.
I would ask the board to vote that you as a board are directing me, after what you have heard in the presentation, to come back, and I will, I will put that, and then you as a, I would be very glad, but I need to know that you as a board, after what you've heard for two school board meetings, still believe and still want, and we will do that.
We don't have to vote again. We already did, and that's where Brian and I had the argument. We have, we don't have to. We already had a motion that was made, supported. 100% of the board members present at that meeting said, "This is what we want to start with." There's, legally, we can't reconsider. It was done. It was a legal binding motion with a directive. We want to do it again to make, to prove the point again.
We'll give you another directive for you. We're fine with it.
I'm really offended, though. I'm really offended that you're assuming we didn't know what we were doing.
Ladies and gentlemen, 1.2 million dollars below fiscal year 18?
17.
17? Below fiscal year 18?
18, sorry.
1.2 million dollars below fiscal year 18? That was your goal? Yes, I don't, do not believe, with all due respect, you had a clue what you were asking for.
Well, it doesn't matter what you think. It's what we asked of you.
Excuse me, Michelle, if I may finish. If the board wishes to pursue that, board, I will come back December 6th, and you will see what that looks like. I will do it, with all due respect, and try to minimize the impact on children. That will be the goal. But I did not want to just say, "Sure, Board, let's just do this and go through this exercise" without your least understanding what I presented last two weeks ago.
But we, we did understand that.
Becky's been waiting.
I just want to say, let's put pause on for one second, and I agree with Michelle and Chris with what they've said, even though it's probably not making anybody happy right now, but we do need to put a pause on because everybody's getting tense. My question is, are there areas in here, in this budget, that have been cut? Is there anything in here that is less than what it was last year?
The answer is, we have added. I have added because we're coming in a, we're coming in a budget with a recommendation.
So there's not one thing in here that is less-
Than last year?
Than last year? Or no?
Mike, there's a lot of things that are less than last year, but some of the accounts that were already cut last year, we couldn't cut further. A lot of the supply accounts were the same. Fortunately for the, with the building maintenance, we were able to reduce a significant amount of money because we've been doing some building projects with surpluses for the past couple of years. So is there things that have been reduced? Yes, there certainly is things that have been reduced, but there's things that have been left at the current levels because they were reduced last year. So, once they were reduced last year to a point, in meeting with the elementary teachers especially, there's a concern we don't have enough supply money left. I know that we don't spend every penny every year, and we're never going to do that, but some of these accounts are, were cut far enough so that I don't feel comfortable, and we don't feel comfortable cutting them further.
That brings me to my next question, then. Are there areas where there was money budgeted, that all of that money wasn't utilized?
Yes, there is.
Okay, so that's something to look at right there. If it wasn't utilized, then maybe it doesn't all need to be there. That's just an off-the-cuff comment, but I mean-
There was also, not to interrupt, but there was also accounts where we overspent that we couldn't control.
That was going to be my next question.
Right.
So I think that, I think that what is disappointing is when we say something like what we did, the 1.2 million directive, and then it's immediately, "We can't do that, we can't do that, we can't do that. You guys don't know what you're talking about. We can't do it." But then there's areas where maybe we could look at it a little bit, or think outside the box. I mean, I know there's areas. I think that's just what's disappointing, and, and that's what makes us not trust each other. If you don't trust us, you think we're evil, maybe, or, or whatever, and we, yeah, incompetent, and we maybe feel like there's probably some areas that we could look at if we work together.
I do not, I do not consider you evil. I do not consider you incompetent, but to build a budget based on reducing the tax rate by one and three-quarter dollars, that's the goal. That's not the charge of the school board, and all due respect, you're in charge of the education of the children. However, you've made it very clear to me, you want on December 6th, a budget that will be based on 1.2 million dollars below fiscal year 18, and you will see that budget, and you will see what the, way we got to that budget. And then it will be in your lap to make your decisions as to where you want this school district to go.
Okay.
I'd like to say, I'm fairly, let me just say one more thing, sorry.
I'm fairly certain, because teachers is a hot topic, that that is going to come up frequently. We have to look at teachers. We have to cut teachers. We have to cut teachers. We have to cut teachers. I just want to say, if that's going to be looked at, I hope that administration is looked at equally in areas.
We're finding conditions already.
I know that. I'm just, I'm just reiterating.
Teachers are off the docket.
Right, I know, but I have a feeling.
The court is off the docket.
I have a feeling.
The directives are clear.
So they were understood.
I was looking for the, where did the 1.2 million come from, that number? I'm just, I'm curious because I wasn't here. I see the directive, what that the board had sent forward, but where is that number coming from?
Honestly, it was a combination of everybody there with ideas that we were throwing out, and the number just escalated from level funding. I started level funding, but to cut right to the chase, Dr. McGudwin, what you just said is the most positive thing that I've heard in this conversation. That's exactly what we wanted when we did what we did Saturday. We wanted to see what it looked like if we got there. Nobody here is saying unequivocally, "We're cutting 1.2. We want to try. We want to try to lower the tax rate by $1.74." What does this budget you propose do to the tax rate? Increases it by something, any increase, is a thousand times away from what we wanted to start with. So, yeah, this is a line in the sand you should not have drawn, and it's a complete disregard of the directive. However, what you just said is exactly what we want. Give it to us, make us do the heavy lifting. Our job is budget. Our job is not to educate kids. It's to hire you people to educate kids and to provide the policy and the funding to do it the best we possibly can, in the most affordable way we can. So that's, you just described exactly what we're trying to get to. We want to see what it looks like, and then we can have the conversation to see everything we did in those directives, Alex. You can see where it says, "Unless data provides otherwise." This is off the table unless they provide, we've left that caveat that we want to cut it, but if you can give us good reason to put it back in, we'll have that conversation. This is not a blanket cut, 1.2 million or not.
I think what everybody in the whole community needs to hear and understand, and the teachers and the staff and everybody else, is we're not going to cut it if it, if it truly isn't there. We can't. We're not going to do that to anybody, but we need to see it. We want to see it.
Just give us, just give us the chance to do our job. You've done yours.
And you've stalled.
I said this in the beginning. You've done your job, your passion and defense of all of you. I said it from the beginning. I will never challenge your passion and what you think is best. Give us a chance to do our job, because there is no rubber stamp in the future. We just, I've never seen a board so engaged and committed to trying to really get to the meat and potatoes of this, and we might come up with something better, but you're not giving us the chance, and can't is not an acceptable answer.
December 6th, you will have it. I did not want to go forward and simply comply with a directive based on a conversation out of the way you're coming from, without your least understanding a historical perspective of what's gone on the past six years, and that where we are today. However, regardless, I've done my job.
Yes.
I've done my job advocating for the past six years and the work of staff and supporting students. You want to go down that path, I respect it. We'll go down that path. December 6th, you will have that budget.
It's just an alternative.
It will be one approach, it'll be one approach to reach 1.2 million below fiscal year 18, knowing that there are going, there are increases right now in this budget that we have no control over, and that the majority of the budget is personnel, and most of the personnel you have said can't be touched. So we will do what we can do to reach that number.
So what's the process? So if we get the budget, just for me, newbie, if we get the budget, December 6th, how long do we have to?
Mike, that was the one thing we wanted to get to tonight. What is our drop dead date for having a budget to go to deliberative session? Do we have a date when, when the last possible day we could talk budget is, well, we could do it deliberative session, but-
At 11:16 is the deadline for that.
So there would be only, there would be only a month to actually work on the budget? Is that what you had last year?
Mm-hmm.
And you said that was too short a time?
It was, but we also-
You can have, no, look, guys, like I said before, my job is to be an advocate and defend what I think is right. It's not to lie down and say, "Yes, yes." However, you have Saturday meetings or options. The clock hasn't stopped ticking. We have plenty of time to roll up our sleeves and do what you want to do. And it doesn't have to be on the first and second Wednesday of the month, and that's it.
Right.
So do we, so we can't get it until December 6th? Is that a logistical thing? I mean, probably, I know you need that much time.
In the interim, we can look at this, Rebecca, as well.
Okay, okay, I guess that was fine.
Yeah, but we can start looking at what we just got tonight, if we have ideas.
Okay, then I think we should really just think about meeting.
We had some questions last week, and I'm seeing them in the, the presentations planned for number 15 comparisons. We talked to technology today. Do you have the information on the comparisons coming out to us?
Yes, we do.
Okay, all right, just making sure.
Would you like to talk about tonight?
That helps, so.
No, we have, that schedule that we prepare for the next three weeks was to answer questions that you all had.
Can we just read the question and then have the answer? With, is that, like the short, the, does that make sense? Instead of-
The paper version.
So Cory, can you answer this?
It may not even be applicable.
Can you respond to this?
Who knows?
The ratio of Claremont School District teachers to administrators in comparison to other New Hampshire school districts, geographic and demographic.
Nope, that's the only one I can't. It's fine. No worries.
Yes, we can. You just did.
I'll give you a bunch of other information, though. I'd be happy to call each one of these school districts and ask how many administrators they have, but that seemingly is the only way to get that information.
Or online. I found a lot of it.
It takes an awful lot of time to go through each school and figure out how many administrators they have, so if you want to do that, I'd be happy to include it in my report.
I'll send it to you.
I care about Claremont. I really don't care what the other districts are doing.
So, no, I don't have the administrator information, but I do have other information. The WLC is, across the top of the spreadsheet, the enrollment figures, the total number of teachers, and the student-to-teacher ratio, those figures-
This is what I just did.
Are from the New Hampshire Department of Education website that can pull that information.
I polled every district that was plus or minus 300 from Claremont School District as listed in this report. I also then polled geographically similar districts such as Newport, Senapee, who are near us, but they would be beyond the plus or minus 300 students, and then I polled some districts that are demographically similar that would be also possibly beyond the plus and minus 300, so that would include places like Massoma Valley Regional or Dover. Fourth column, or fifth column, I guess, if you think about it, operational budget for 17, 18. Those are not necessarily the budgets posted on the warrant. As you know, in our budget, for instance, it's a 30 million, $31 million budget for operations. We put about a $34 million budget on the warrant, and that's because of the food service pass-through and the grants that we receive. So we have to have that dollar figure on our warrant in able, in order for us to be able to allocate those resources and those funds, even though that's not the total amount funded through the taxpayer. Next column, special education rate. That's the percent of total students in each of those districts who are identified as having an individualized education plan or special education.
At some point, could you, because that jumped out, we're the second highest in the, of all of this. Could you come up with a percentage of the budget that that special ed represents, just to see, that's just the, to see what the budget represents? It's important to see that.
It is important, so, yeah.
Just, yeah, just nothing trades, just of the 31 million, we have 23% of our population is special ed. Especially, how much is, out of that 31 million, does that represent? Just curious. Is that, most of that's on state mandates, so.
Chris, do you have that?
Yeah.
It's about 25% in our district.
I pulled some stuff comparative to like a, a district 20 miles away, and in this district, we have approximately, it's from the National Center for Education Statistics, which is kind of cool, I've never even seen it before, but it said we have approximately 408 kids in Claremont on IEPs, and 20 miles away, they have 179 approximately on IEPs. So that's just a tidbit of information. That's a good chunk right there.
I think it depends on who you're comparing to. So 20 miles away includes a few different school districts.
Right, and then, and then, for example, they have ELL, 69 students, and we have 12, you know what I mean? So it's all figured, but it still sticks out, you know, not in a bad way, in a, in a pretty eye-opening money way.
Yeah.
About, it's about 7, about 7.1 million of that, our budget is-
Could be, so we're ready to talk about 12 items in special education tonight.
I can just give it to you, and you can digest it on your own?
We really would greatly.
Yeah, and come back on the 6th, and we can certainly do that.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Sorry, Cory, go ahead.
So if you look at, if you look at, oh, I'm sorry. No, no, let her, let her finish. Yeah.
If you look at the homeless count, that data figure is a year old. That's because the new data isn't available. I tried getting it directly from the Department of Education and got an out-of-office response since the last time we discussed, so I haven't been able to get the updated numbers for that. Total buildings is also a little bit subject to interpretation. It's based on what was accessible on each individual school district's website for the number of buildings that they have. Some of those school districts include a preschool-specific building, and some of them include a CTE-specific building, whereas some of them are combined in the other buildings. Percent free and reduced lunch is simply that, but those figures, again, are from 16, 17, not this current school year. The out-of-district percent, that's the percent of students who are placed out of district for special education or other services, and then the equalized tax rate for local education. So the equalized tax rate is, that's the education or local school district component of the total tax rate for those different communities. One thing to keep in mind with Hanover, for instance, the data for that particular line is a little unclear because Hanover is one of the, I think, two interstate school districts, and so trying to ascertain that information is a challenge, and they did not return any of our attempts to communicate with them directly to get better information. So I, I have what I was able to find online and on the Department of Education website, but nothing more concrete than that. So I considered just taking that out completely, but then I figured you'd wonder why I took that out completely, so I left it on there with that caveat. It's sorted alphabetically. I have it available electronically. It can be sorted in a variety of different ways, depending on what you want to look at. The operational budgets also predominantly were what we, where we called each business office in each of the school districts to get their operational budget, because that's not always publicly available. There is a couple of school districts who did not, again, return our call and email. We tried both. So in those cases, I just used what was posted on their publicly available documents that I could find online.
You know, I mean, if you could send us this electronically, that would be awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cory. Short and sweet, good information.
So the only piece that was on the list that Michael Milton produced was the administrators, and again, without calling each of the districts, I wasn't able to attain that. When you think about administrators in our district, for instance, as you saw in Nathan's slide, I think at the last meeting, not all of the folks that, that may be considered administrators are actually administrators, and so it's hard to determine based on just looking at a district's or a building's website, who's in what kind of role and how they might classify those. So we can devote some man-hours to that, or it would be woman-hours, but there would be many of them.
Am I correct, though, that the board has a feeling that we're top-heavy, top-heavy in administration? Is that a feeling?
That's not, that's not.
You guys, we've got to stop looking into what we're just-
No, no, I've heard it, Chris. Becky?
Yes, absolutely, and it's not necessarily the board. It's questions that you hear all the time in the community as a board member. Well, do you think you have too much administration? Do you think they're top-heavy? And then I need to ask the questions. Are we, do I have my own personal feelings on that? Absolutely, but does it matter? I just need to ask the question and have the answer.
And that's important, because if you're hearing the community, the community also deserves to hear this and to have the presentation.
And that's how I feel.
Right, but, but once again, we need to have that information or the concern of the community so we can respond.
I think I shared it, but now at least it's really clear, so I apologize if I didn't share that earlier, but-
who's in what kind of role, and how they might classify those. So we can devote some man-hours to that, or it would be woman-hours, but there would be many of them.
Am I correct, though, that the board has a feeling that we're top-heavy, top-heavy in administration? Is that a feeling?
We've got to stop looking into what we're just...
No, no, I've heard it, Chris, Becky?
Yes, absolutely, and it's not necessarily the board, it's questions that you hear all the time in the community as a board member. Well, do you think you have too much administration? Do you think they're top-heavy? And then I need to ask the questions. Are we, do I have my own personal feelings on that? Absolutely, but does it matter? I just need to ask the question and have the answer.
And that, and that's important, because if you're hearing it in the community, the community also deserves to hear this and to have the presentation.
And that's how I feel.
Right, but, but once again, we need to have that information or the concern of the community, so we can respond.
I think I shared it, but now at least it's really clear, so I apologize, apologize if I didn't share that earlier, but...
I think to a person, that's kind of where we're all coming from. We're not sitting here as individuals, we're sitting here as representatives of other people who've come to us with, with concerns or comments, you know, whatever it is, it's not just coming from us, it's coming from the people we represent too. And the ideas come up, okay, it's worth looking at, let's see, let's, you know, we're, Frank said it, and I still go by it, we're in a crisis mode, let's look at everything. Doesn't mean every, you know, it just means, let's just look at everything and see what we can do.
Can we have a conversation regarding special education, Chris, so we can pass this off to the board?
Up to you guys.
Would you like to take, have some homework?
Yeah, that was... Got work to do.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Cory, just out of curiosity, is there a website or place out there that one board could go look and find out, point of contact for all the other boards? Because I don't want to dump this all on you guys. We can do legwork that, you know, we want things, we can reach out to another school board and say, "Hey, what, can you help us?" Where would we find that information, other than trying to go to that specific school? Is there a central school board website that?
There's that New Hampshire School Board Association website.
That's where I get a lot of information from.
We can always, as a representative, we can, we can follow the municipal association, we can call over the school boards and say, "Hey, help me out. What did you guys got for numbers?"
That would be N H S B A dot org.
And each, and...
I'll include it in my email, too.
Please do.
This, you want this. Put yourself in here, do you want?
You guys have any other?
I don't know what else, yeah.
This?
You can have my one. I mean, it's just like asking the question of why there's four teachers at, kindergarten teachers at Maple, and only two at Bluff.
I just think we need to make a meeting outside at some point to just...
Well, I was just saying, what's the, what's, do we?
It's going to be not...
What's the pleasure of the board, of how we want to, do we want to wait till the 6th? Do we want to have a meeting before the 6th to talk, like we did on the Saturday? How do you guys, it's up to you guys, what do you want to do?
Probably both, probably going to be both.
I feel like both.
Great, you were going to say that.
Both.
I don't have my life planner on me right now. It is a true thing.
Well, next week's Thanksgiving week, so I'm assuming we're, you know, guys, in all honesty...
I know.
We do not have a ton of time left between now and the 6th, anyway, do you?
Well, we're going to have to figure it out, because...
Can we get this electronically?
Oh, I know Mike can do it.
Can we what?
Electronically?
Can you email me this? It's in Excel.